...regular meeting and public hearing of the Manatee County School Board. I want to ask you to rise and join Board Member Hope in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the June 25, 2019 Agenda, updated June 25, 2019, and posted to the District West side. Is there a motion? Do you approve the agenda as stated?
Assumed.
So moved by Board Member Kennedy.
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Messenger. Is there any discussion? The Chair hearing none, will call the question. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It carries unanimously.
Mr. Minor, I just wanted to point out that the engagement letter that was discussed during the workshop is also included in these amendments, that the agenda had been amended between the workshop and the board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. We had a very wonderful, informative session this afternoon in a workshop, and there's some of the efforts is reflected in the agenda for this evening. That's what the clerk was referring to. And thank you very much. The next thing is reports and presentations. We have with Mr. Barber, Michael Barber, who works very hard to help inform our community what's going on. He has a presentation regarding year-end WeManatee videos. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board Member Superintendent Saunders.
WeManatee stands for We Are the School District of Manatee County. And it means it takes all of us in this community to support public education. And the fact that when we all stand together, it makes us all stronger. WeManatee consists of a series of videos produced by an extremely talented team of district employees from the Department of Community Engagement and Communications and Manatee Schools Television, MSTV. Tonight, we are sharing two end-of-the-year videos that are produced by this team. And we're going to show the first one right now. It's the debut of this video. It's the first time it's been shown publicly. So if we could go ahead and...
And so, in the cold, you don't want the cell membrane being rigid and breaking. We're all born scientists. From the day we're born, we're learning. And we're learning through observing. When you cried and your parents responded, you learned. I cry, I get something. When it gets to isotonic stage where it's equal, what's going to happen?
She's sharing this like collection of knowledge that she has, this amazing collection of knowledge that she has. And it's just really exciting to be her student.
Emma is one of those special students that she knows the value of education, and she knows that it can take her far. Does all life have a mitochondria?
Ms. Zelo is, she is so passionate about every subject she teaches. I had her for freshman year in honors biology, sophomore year in AP Biology, and then again this year in AP Environmental Science. And every year, it's just, she's so passionate about what she does.
We have 20 different letters in our amino acid vocabulary. Being an alumna from Manatee High School, I definitely wanted to come back and keep on continuing the tradition of excellence here at Manatee High. So I was thrilled to come back here, and I never wanted to leave. That's why I did all 33 years here.
I'm going to Bates College, and then I want to do graduate school after that. I want to study genetics. And then I want to go either into genetic counseling or into genetic research.
Genetics is such a huge thing now with what we can do with DNA and actually go back to the actual DNA and figure out why diseases are where they are.
Oh, 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 it's particulates. Particulates is the only ones all four of them. I'm excited to graduate, and I'm excited to just see what the future holds. But I will definitely miss my time at Manatee. I've had so many fond memories, both in the classroom and with friends.
I'm going to be the full-time caregiver for my grandson. I'm trading in 173 big ones for one little one.
Yeah. Close up.
I feel so fortunate, and I feel so grateful that Ms. Zelo has, just is so passionate about and so dedicated to her students. And I'm just, I'm just so thankful. And I think, I think every one of her students in some way like is so grateful to everything she brings.
Well, some remember that I'm hard, but I'd rather them remember that I cared, and that I was passionate. I remember one of my former teachers, and I've never said this, but I always thought it was great, but he said, he was a math teacher, but he said, "I don't teach math. I teach students." And I love that.
I am Emma Johnston.
And I'm Patricia Zelo.
And we are the School District of Manatee County.
Join us at WeManatee.net.
We thought that was an excellent way to sort of end the year because we have one of our graduates that's leaving us and going on, you know, to college. And then we had a teacher who's been with us for 33 years, and she's going into retirement. So we thought it was just a beautiful way to sum up this school year. Emma and Ms. Zelo are here. If they would just come forward real quick, we just want to present them with a little something from our WeManatee teams. Melissa?
Good luck in men. Thank you. Bye, Jack. Thank you so much. Oh, well, thank you.
Melissa, why don't you stand up there with them?
Sure.
And let's get a photo of this school board.
I have him too.
It's not like us getting a photo with him.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can you just remind everyone what you're doing next year?
I'm going to Bates College in Maine to study biology and hopefully pursue a track in genetic research.
Okay. And I believe you have family members here?
Yes.
They just... What are you doing next year?
Next Monday.
Oh, next Monday?
I start taking care of my grandson.
Okay. All right. Thank you for participating.
I think we'll still see Pat on her big blue bike riding through, riding through Central Bradenton from time to time.
All right, this next video is for us the perfect way to end the year. I think some of you might have seen this before. We've added a little bit to it, but this is the final WeManatee video of the 2018-2019 school year. So let's show that.
Hip, hip! Hip, hip! Hip, hip! That's what I'm talking about. We're going to college.
I love you, Class of 2019. And I may be a gator now, but we will all always be tigers at heart.
My biggest inspiration in high school, my friends, everybody in this room right now. I would say family, but this is my family. After this, I'm going into the military service, and I'm doing that to protect everybody in this room, you know? Because we got a lot of dangers out in the world, and I want to make sure everybody here succeeds in dreams. I'm willing to sacrifice my own life so these people can achieve higher.
Today is a very special day for our graduates. It marks the culmination of many years of study and hard work.
From her being on the softball field with me, from her, my mental breakdowns and getting me through classes, like honestly, without them, high school would not have been what it was these last four years.
We love you.
Mom, I know you're out there somewhere, and I just want to let you know how much I love you and how thankful I am for everything you've done for me. You are my biggest inspiration.
His name is Ms. Ortiz. He's a teacher that I had in middle school, and he helped me get through a lot of my problems. And he's kind of like a father to me. And I actually invited him here tonight, so he's going to see me graduate.
In an era when it has become easy for young people to focus on individual needs and wants, the class of 2019 chose cohesiveness, camaraderie, and caring, and they have done it with style.
I didn't expect high school to be as like memorable as it was, but it really made a big impact and like impacted how I am and who I am today.
Class of 2019, I want to say congratulations to making it here. And it's not barely making it here, it's you made it here.
This life is yours, so live it in a way that makes you happy.
The choir has given me so many great friendships, relationships. I know each and every single person on a different level. We just grow through music, with music, for music.
Join us at WeManatee.net.
Thank you. And you know, all the credit really goes to the graduates of the class of 2019. I know you all were there to witness a lot of those moments, but I really want to recognize tonight the people who've made these videos possible throughout the last two years. And so this is our WeManatee team that produces, creates, shoots, and edits these videos. So I'd like to introduce, first of all, Melissa Parker. She's our Communication Specialist with the Office of Communications. Michael Trimboli with MSTV. And Matt Messenger, the instructional, the supervisor of Instructional TV in the School District of Manatee County. They've done a tremendous job. While I'm up here, I just want to take a moment. I'd like to ask if two of the employees who we never get to see, who are always in the back room, and they're always airing these, you know, our school board meetings, but Susan Gilbank, MSTV Instructional Television Program Specialist, and Nick Bachelder, MSTV These, these are the people who help make you guys famous, who broadcast your faces out to millions every single month. But I would like, Nick, how long have you been doing these board meetings?
Since July 1919.
Can you imagine that? Virtually every board meeting since 1998.
Work was in there.
Okay. And Susan, how long have you been doing it?
Nine.
Okay, all right. Well, this is a team, like I said, that does excellent work. You saw that on the screen tonight. So I would like to get a shot of them, if they could, in front of the podium here with the school board in the background. Let me do that.
Okay. There you go. Nick, you have survived out far.
Right. One, two.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
I get a little teared up. I'm known as a sap a little bit, but I just, I'm very moved by all of this. And that's the way I am. Excuse me. At this time, we're going to have a report from me concerning Central Florida Public School Board Coalition. I think we're, you know, at that. And I think many of you recognize that Manatee is a leader of 14 county school boards, you know, in the state of Florida. You know, over a million families with children are subject to this Central Florida Public School Board Coalition that extends from Manatee over to Indian River County, you know, up to Volusia, Polk, Sumter, Marion County, Philsboro, you know, Orange County, Highlands County, Polk County, just a lot of counties. And we've had the privilege, you know, for, you know, many years of helping to bring together ideas, you know, sharing ideas, sharing advocacy, you know, with the state and with the legislature. We meet usually monthly, usually in Orlando, but this past month, you know, we met in Tampa. And part of the discussion, part of the advocacy was, you know, how great it is, you know, to be able to be with board members and officials, you know, superintendents from other counties to learn maybe what they're doing is could be helpful when we get together here in our board. We did this in Tampa this year, as I said. What came of it was, all right, we need to communicate better, you know, with our legislature. The new president of the Florida School Board Association is from Osceola County, which is another one of the counties that's part of the Central Florida Public School Board Coalition. And he spoke about, you know, the need, you know, for corroborate, not corroboration, but, you know, coalition, you know, with those who are making the decisions. Many of the decisions in the legislature and the executive branch is sometimes, gee whiz, what are they doing? You know, are they really, you know, caring for our children? And that's what we're all about. Everyone here on this day are in it for the children. That's why we're doing it. The children of our community to make a better, you know, community. And what, you know, has been expressed so many times at the Coalition, are they in Tallahassee really thinking about the children? Or are they there to kind of brag about, you know, keeping taxes low, you know, compared with other states? Are we serving the people? Are we serving the children? And I was moved at our meeting at the tone of, you know, collaboration with those who hold those positions in Tallahassee. Vice Chair Messenger, I believe at the last meeting talked in terms of what we need to do here as a board, is to be planning on how we are going to respond to our legislators that go into basically an earlier, you know, session of meeting this year than past years to present what we feel is best, you know, for our community, for the children. And she was so right on that, and that is going to be a priority. And this was underscored when we got together in Tampa, you know, a couple weeks ago. What we, I'm going to slide into the next thing about the Florida School Board Directors and Leadership Training. You may know I'm one of the directors of the Florida School Board Association, which was meeting at the same time. This was the group. And this, this tone of collaboration was kind of the theme of the Board of Directors. We're not ever going to win a fight, you know, with the legislators or the governor and saying, you know, gee whiz, you know, what, where are you on this? We're going to win for the children, you know, by collaborating and letting them know that we support their efforts, you know, to recognize really what should be the goals of this state, because we're all going to be parts of the future. And the future is our children. At the Florida School, at the get-together, the Florida School Board Association, besides the Board of Directors meetings and seminars, there was an intensity of other board members who were there to, you know, learn from not just the seminars, but from the speeches. I was moved by one of the speeches very much when they started talking about the importance of our recognizing that education in communities is being part of a family. We're bringing everybody together, you know, to work for a better tomorrow because the children, they are tomorrow. And the putting our arms out to the community and all that we're in there. I think that this was so much in my feelings when I attended the service to our deceased two great students from Southeast High School. We have a parent here with us today. And there was just an enormous amount of, you know, we're all, you know, together. We're all grieving together. We're all appreciative of what we've been able to do, what the privilege we had as a family, you know, directly or indirectly, being involved with bringing together and educating two very wonderful young spirits. And, you know, I call it sapped out, but I really got sapped out. And it was a beautiful service out at the Woodland Church. And I was, you know, thinking there about, you know, what just, you know, a few days earlier was talking about the family of education. And it, I say that recognizing a great privilege to serve you as chair and serve in this community and be with the others up here, you know, with you. There, I would, I'm going to call upon Board Member Hope and Board Member Golden and, you know, the others to, you know, join in their remarks about our being together for the FSBA complay up in Tampa. Board Member Hope, do you have some thoughts you'd also like to share?
I would just like to mention, let the public know that twice a year, we have a joint meeting with school board members around the state and the Association of District School Superintendents. So the superintendents and the board members get together, and we hear from what other districts are doing. And Mr. Gibbeline is not here, but one of the sessions I went to, a district in Central Florida has created a partnership to, basically build a school district greenhouse for the students to actually grow plan and grow food that's going to be served in the cafeterias. And so it was interesting where they partnered with an agricultural company, they partnered with other community partners, and they laid out a business plan, and they're in the process of, you know, constructing the greenhouses. And these students are actually going to become basically farmers, and they're going to bring their produce directly into the schools, and the food service is going to work with them on what they need. And so I thought that was, you know, pretty, pretty innovative. But it's, it's good to get together with our colleagues around the state, and we also learn, you know, how, how much better we probably are than many of them. We're strong financially, and we've got improved academic performance. But thank you, Mr. Chair.
Board Member Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I must comment on your modesty because you did not share with the community that you were elected also to serve on the Legislative Committee of the Florida School Board Association. He is a delegate. He represents the District 15, I believe it is, on that, on that very, very important advocacy group on behalf of public education in the state of Florida. And so I want to congratulate you for that. There were three things that, that I took away. There were three activities that I had an opportunity to participate in. First, I'd like to report to the community that we're on the right side with respect to arming teachers. We had an excellent presentation made by some of the people who served on the Parkland Commission. And the long and the short of it is that that terrible amount of violence took place in about three to four minutes. But the solution that they proposed was that we should not arm or allow teachers to be armed. And a great number of colleagues on the school boards and a great number of the superintendents said, "It seems to me you'd be better served if you tried to hire better people to protect us in that four minutes than you would by bringing more guns into, into our schools." And that was a tremendous and very impactful session that we had. Secondly, we talked about the census, the upcoming dicennial census that impacts reapportionment. It impacts funding for education. It impacts funding for a plethora of things in the state. It impacts reapportionment at the state level and the federal level. And one of the requests that was made is that we employ all of the resources we can in our school system to participate, to fully participate in making sure that we get a full comp here in Manatee County. That is just so important for what we're trying to accomplish, not just in the classroom, but in the community at large. And lastly, one of the issues that was lifted up was that of climate change. We've got to start treating our environment better. And I know that we have done a lot of innovative things in this community with respect to technology education and with respect to science, techno, engineering, yeah, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. But I'm hopeful that somehow we can start turning our attention toward the very important problem of dealing with the impact that carbon emissions have on our quality of life even now, and what they are projected to be like in 20 or 30 years. And so I don't know how we move in that direction, but if we can somehow tie that kind of thing into our curriculum and start increasing the awareness in our children right now, perhaps they'll come up with a solution that we don't even know about to try to help us to cope with the excesses of our past. So I thank you for the opportunity to be there and to be participatory, Mr. Chair. And I'm hopeful that I will be able to attend the fall session where we will learn more about school finances. And I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Board Member Golden. Board Member Kennedy, would you like to add something to what's already been said?
It's been covered pretty well already.
Vice Chair Messenger, thank you. We work together. We're doing real well. Okay, the next thing is, let me get my script out. We're going to have a public hearing, and so my script says I have to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing for the board to hear public comments regarding proposed adoption of policy 4430.03, sixth leave, and amendment to policy 6835, internal audit and regarding the internal audit. Now, I'm going to ask for the clerk to, is there, I'm going to pass it over to the Vice Chair to ask if there is any public comment and to, you know, take charge of the public hearing.
Sure. I do not have anyone signed up, but if there's anyone here, since it is a public hearing, anyone can come forward and speak on these two policy changes. As the Chair said, it's 4430.03. It's about support staff and administration and instructional personnel. And the other policy that we will be holding a public hearing on is policy 6835, and it is about the internal auditing function. So if there's anyone that would like to come forward and speak on either one of those two topics, speak now and forever hold your peace.
The, okay, sitting down, I'm going to close the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting. And the superintendent have a recommendation concerning approval of the adoption of the new policy and amendment to the current school board policy regarding these matters.
Yes, I recommend the approval of adoption of the new policy and amendment to the current school board policy.
Okay. I'm going to turn this off. Is there a... Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations?
Second.
Okay, now, there can be public comment at this point as well. I'm going to turn over the gavel to the, no, I'm being told no. Okay, we don't have to do that again. Okay, I'm going to take it back. Okay.
No offense to that.
Okay, no offense, okay. So if there's no further discussion, okay, the chair recognizes vice chair Messenger.
Sure, just so that everyone here knows what the policy change is really addressed, the biggest policy change really addresses the fact that it, in previous policies, I think we were not really allowing for an in-house internal auditor that would answer directly to the board. And one of the things that, the biggest change that I see that's going to happen when we approve this is that there may be some functions that are performed by an in-house internal auditor, but they will directly report to the school board, which I think is an important thing that we note and make sure the public is aware of that that is a change that could happen. And we've talked about it a lot, but I want to make sure that we are making it clear that that's what this policy change is going to do.
Any further comments? You know, part of where we're going with this is there's a feeling that, you know, having, you know, part of the internal auditing done could be done maybe more efficiently, you know, by having some staff, employed staff as opposed to outside internal audit functions, which have been exclusively how we've been doing it for the last five or six years. That's where we're going. So, is there any further comments? The chair hearing none, the chair will call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes unanimously. The next item before the board is approval of the minutes. Does the superintendent have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the minutes from Ju-
Chair Miner, we have public comments.
Okay, I apologize to everyone here. The clerk is correct. It's time for some more public comments if there is available. And I'm going to hand over the gavel to the vice chair to be in charge of this.
Some more.
Some more, she does such a great job, remember?
I will read our typical spiel. Public comment is not an open forum to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the school board or public. Also, public comment is not an open forum to attack individual, school system employees or board members. Any such complaints should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Finally, this is not a forum for addressing issues involving individual students. Because of privacy concerns, such issues should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. Speakers must stand at the podium and not approach the dais. If a speaker has a handout to present to the board, those must be given to the agency clerk for distribution. This is a business meeting of the school board and the public expects that we conduct in an orderly, efficient, effective, and dignified manner. We request that speakers keep this in mind when making your comments. We also request that the audience keep that in mind and not demonstrate approval or disapproval of what a speaker has said by clapping or booing. The board appreciates the public's input and will listen attentively, consider each comment, and usually will not respond, enter into debate, or answer questions during comments on agenda items or during the public comment section. And with that, I will start with Ms. Becky Keneese, and after Becky Keneese will be Mr. Parrish. And Becky, my understanding is you have signed up to speak for a group, so you have five minutes.
Thank you. I have some handouts.
Yeah.
This is Messenger. She go first before me.
Sure.
Thank you.
Members of the board, chairman, Miner, Superintendent Saunders, have you ever felt hopeless? Our girls have struggled to survive in the midst of circumstances that no child should have to face, from abuse to bullying and crisis, the ABCs of trauma. Some of them are English language learners, others are students with special needs, ESE students. Nearly all of them are disadvantaged and living in poverty, which is why both our alternative education programs at Just for Girls Elementary and Just for Girls Middle are on the district's list of Title I schools and the Florida Department of Education's list of district-operated schools of choice. Just for Girls builds resilience and strengthens protective factors that result in girls' positive adaptation to overcoming adversity. We apply more than 50 years' experience in risk prevention and intervention to overcome and reverse the effects of adverse childhood experiences. These lead to delays or deficiencies in the vital ABCs, academics, behavior, and character development for success and survival. As school board members, you are responsible to assure that every student under the district umbrella receives all the benefits of a free and appropriate public education without discrimination according to federal law. These benefits include safety and high-quality teachers and staff. And we at Just for Girls extended our school days to align with the stated intentions of the district in its referendum adopted last year. In its resolution, the district asserted that the education funds available to the board were insufficient for an excellence in education that its public students deserve. The neighboring school districts have used the additional revenue generated by the increased millage to maintain and expand academic programs, including remediation programs. And whereas in your resolution, you stated, in the absence of the additional operating revenue generated by the additional voted one mill, the district will face a revenue shortfall that will result in significant budget cuts threatening numerous academic programs and positions. The revenues generated by the additional millage for operational purposes shall be used to increase student achievement through more instructional time and after-school tutoring, recruit and retain teachers and staff with competitive salaries. These are precisely the reasons why equitable funds are needed for district students served by the remediation programs under the umbrella of the dropout prevention department of the Manatee County School District. The resolution also provides for a financial oversight committee appointed by the school board. And this committee unanimously recommends funding for Just for Girls and the other eight contracted sites this year and the next three years, and specifically to include them in the ballot language when this comes before the voters again. The students we serve are included in Focus, the district's software program that tracks its students and generates payments from the local and state revenue that follows the students. Our students at Just for Girls are included in the count for the Manatee County School District with our student progress reported, along with the district in its list of schools. For 14 months, you have studied this question of equitable funding for students in alternative remedial programs. Your citizens' financial oversight committee recommended the funding to make these contracted sites whole this year and every year. You have debated the lack of clarity in the referendum that does not exclude, yet does not specifically include, the contracted sites, while it does include other contracted sites, the charter schools. For 25 years, your superintendents have recommended approval of these Just for Girls contracts on your consent agenda because one size does not fit all. Too many students are failing to thrive in a traditional school setting and need an alternative remedial education to prevent them from dropping out, or worse, giving up all hope. Without this funding, these programs are in jeopardy. The question coming before you today is an opportunity for you to demonstrate strong leadership that proves you understand your legal obligation to provide an equitable education for all students, especially those most vulnerable, who will otherwise be further disadvantaged by the millage if you shortchange them and their teachers. Failure to act is to exclude them, discriminates unfairly against them, and fails to represent these most vulnerable impoverished students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Skyler? And then after Skyler, we'll have Larry Parrish.
Hi, school board member, Superintendent Saunders, thank you so much for having me. My name is Skyler Norris Geyer, and I am here today to discuss the naming opportunity for the agricultural building at Parrish Community High School. Specifically, I am requesting that the agricultural building be named after my father, Ollie Norris. I would like to give you a little bit of background as to why I'm proposing his name for this building. My father grew up in Kissimmee, Florida. His love for agriculture and farming led him to the University of Florida and Florida Southern, where he received his BS degree in agriculture and was the president of his class. After college, my father became a fertilizer salesman for Swift, serving farms throughout Florida. During his career in the early 70s, he found a small town called Parrish that he fell in love with, and he purchased his first orange grove off a dicky road. This would only be the beginning of his successful farming career. My father went on to farm and live in Parrish for over 35 years, until his death. He specialized in farming tomatoes and oranges throughout Florida, specifically in Parrish, Ruskin, Quincy, and Amokli. My father's favorite passion was to serve his community by supporting Manatee County Schools athletic and band programs. He was a fan and a champion of Palmetto High School, attending every home football game. Most of the time, you would find Mr. Ollie, as the students would call him, mentoring or giving advice to students about education and their careers. In addition, he loved Parrish Methodist Church and was an integral part of funding and planning the expansion of that church. Although my father did not have the chance to see his dream come true of Parrish having a high school, he would have loved to have been a part of its construction and development. There's certainly not a more deserving person, sorry, than Ollie Norris to have the Parrish Community High School Agricultural Building named after him. Once again, please consider naming Parrish Community Schools Agricultural Building after my father, Ollie Norris. Thank you again for your time and consideration. Sorry.
Come on down, Mr. Parrish.
Hello, how are you doing? My name's Larry Parrish, and I appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak with you. In 1961, when I graduated from high school, my granddaddy brought a young fellow in there and he said, told my daddy, he said, "You ought to buy some fertilizer from this guy. He's a good fellow." And that's when I met Oliver Norris. And everybody will call him Ollie, but I was introduced to him as Oliver, and I knew him for the rest of his life as Oliver, and we were very close friends. Oliver, all Oliver did was work hard and farm hard and push children, and there's some few things that I'd like to tell you about that I know Skyler does not even know. There's only three people in my time that I've known that did this. One was Hal Chacy, another one was a man named Ron Hartung there in Parrish, and Oliver Norris. They would, they would, there would be a kid that was, underprivileged kid, that would receive an animal and get that animal to show and in their name and receive that and be paid for by then. They would never know that. They would, and then sometimes the feed bill would be paid off at the end, and the child would never know that. And those three men, I know for a fact, did that. I personally know that they did it. Another thing, and in the Parrish Cafe in the old days, when I had the Grove Care business there in Parrish, he was there in the mornings, he was there at lunch. And one thing he was always doing is teasing and cuddling the fool with the kids and pushing them hard to go to college. I was one great disappointment because I only, as I've told you before, I went to Manatee Junior College then, long enough to learn how to shoot pool and find my way to the beach. That's about all I learned there. But still, he was, he taught me so much about the, about chemicals. He was my go-to guy, and he was that way for a lot of people. The other thing that I know that he did, on one occasion, there was a farmer in Parrish. That farmer used up his $10,000 chit with the local chemical warehouse in Parrish and could not purchase any more chemicals or fertilizers there. Oliver let him start billing it on his name. When Oliver died in 2000, that $20,000 was still sitting over there. Oliver negotiated one $10,000 and paid off the other one himself. And the other, the man never knew it, never knew it. I knew that. That's the kind of person he was. I asked him about it, he said he was my friend. And it was, that's how poor it was. The other thing was, if anybody belonged to the Parrish Methodist Church, if you were there in 2000, you would have seen one of the largest funerals I've ever seen because farmers don't come out in the middle of the day. But they came from Quincy and they came from south of Okeechobee to see his, at his funeral. And this is something you should think about, should think about, Ollie Norris. Thank you.
Thank you, Skyler, thanks.
Okay, the next person on the list is Bridget Mendel, and I know we saw her at the workshop, but I just want to call her out in case she's out in the lobby, Bridget Mendel. Okay, Kevin Morris, and after Kevin Morris will be Lawrence Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Superintendent Saunders and board members, for the opportunity to come and talk. We've been in these chambers many times for our son, for award ceremonies. We know Doug Whitner very well. My wife went to Leadership Manatee with Mr. Kennedy. My wife and I, Laura, we've lived at 13611 North US Highway 301 in Parrish for 18 years. Our son Zach and his best friend Albert lost their lives during their senior graduation trip to Peru. They were riding together on a small scooter and were struck down by a recklessly speeding bus. My wife and I traveled to Peru to bring the boys home, and it was the hardest thing we will ever have to do. But one of the things that helped us through this has been the support of our community, and that includes the Boys' School, Southeast High School. And I just want to come here today and brag to you about how we've been treated and about the people at Southeast High School. And Superintendent Saunders, I don't have to tell you, your principals are the field generals. They are so important. I can't say enough about Principal Rosa Faison. She had just congratulated both boys on graduating with their IB diplomas, and they passed away just six days later. And so a week after graduation, she had to stand in front of the news media and the students and set an example of courage, leadership, understanding, and compassion. And I don't know where she pulled that strength from, but she stepped up and she led our community when we needed it. And I have to say, the support we've gotten from the community has been amazing. We've gotten cards from some of you. We have so many cards, we haven't even been able to open them yet. So many emails, so many texts. We received a whole batch of letters from the Palmetto High School Spanish class expressing sympathy. We received a whole batch of letters from a school in Arizona also expressing sympathy. And I also cannot say enough about the other members of the administration and faculty at Southeast High School. Shelley DeCesar, Nan Sizemore, Sherry Greenhaw, and Richard Platt, they not only spoke to the news media when we couldn't, but they also spoke at the boys' memorial service. And they told such compassionate and heartwarming stories about the boys, it was obvious that they loved them just as we did. And imagine the courage it takes to stand in front of 600 people and publicly share those cherished memories of these two special boys who were in your classroom just three weeks earlier. So we will be forever grateful to them for that kindness. And I also wanted to say thank you to the chairman, Dave Miner. Mr. Miner, your signature as the chairman is the signature on our son's diploma, and it will be the only diploma he will ever have the chance to earn. And it meant so much that you came to the service and you sat on the front row. And I remember being frozen by the moment, I was on the front row. And as those teachers got up there to speak, some of them were overcome with emotion, and I was frozen, but you stood up. up and you hugged them as they came off the stage. I should have done that, and you were there. And so, I just want to thank you for stepping up when we needed it and providing that leadership. And we will also remember the tears you had in your eyes as you did that. Lastly, our son had his pick of schools. He had been accepted to Yale, Princeton, Vanderbilt, Duke, and four Florida universities. He got there because of the Manatee County School System. He got there because of Southeast High School. He got there because of Principal Rosa Faison and the teachers who spoke so lovingly of him at the service. We have a lot of regrets. There are things we wish we had told Zach. There's lessons we wish we had shared. There are things we wish we had done differently in the hopes that it might have helped to avoid the accident. And Reverend Golden, as you know, we don't always know God's plan. We don't. But one thing we will never regret is that we entrusted our son's education to the fine men and women of Southeast High School. They helped to create an amazing young man with so many talents, gifts, and character who wanted to change the world and make it a better place. And each of them made a difference in our son's life. He looked up to them, he admired them, he respected them, and we are so grateful that they were all a part of his life. And I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I would like to present you this boxed picture of the boys. That's our son Zach in white, representing the top 4% at Southeast. And on the left is, is, on my left, your right, is Albert. Those are the two boys who, who passed away. The boy in the middle, Robert Rawls, their friend, is the first member of his family who will attend college, and he wants to be a teacher. And he's going to be a great one because he's had some amazing role models at Southeast High School. And so, I know I'm not supposed to hand this to the chairman, but if you would allow me, I would like to do that. And, and, and thank you all for the opportunity to speak today.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You know, I don't, I, I, let's pray. I don't care. Sue me. Take me before the elections commission.
Yes.
Return to God, our Father, we come right now and ask for your peace in the lives of this brother whose child is now in your bosom. We pray not only for this child going on, but for all of those who remain here, that they might live up to the needs that we have in this community. Move, God, as only you can move. We don't ask you to dry our weeping eyes, but we just ask you to let us see through the tears the bright sunshine of tomorrow. Come now, and together the people of God said, "Amen." Amen, thank you. Can we, can we just take a minute? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other public comments? Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. Can we just take a recess for two minutes? Just two minutes. Okay. Any objection? Okay. Okay, we're going to be in recess for five minutes. Okay. Didn't expect that. Okay. Oh, God. Please stop. So now, we're going to resume our, our meeting. It's, I believe we were in public comments, and I'm going to ask Vice Chair if there's anyone further to be called, give the opportunity for their public comments.
Yes, we have one more. Mr. Newman, come on down.
Okay, thank you.
You have a tough speech to follow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Superintendent, board members. I'm here again to speak to you about the importance of Holocaust education. Because although Holocaust education has been mandated for all schools in Florida for the past 25 years, very often is not taught at all, or if so, the results are not within the spirit or the intent of the law. We're now nearly halfway through the summer, and I ask you, what steps have the Manatee Schools taken to implement their mandatory Holocaust education? Because although commendably, our schools do teach black slavery, they fall very short on teaching Jewish slavery. I've handed out to you an article and a brochure. "The intent of the law as to teach the Holocaust is a uniquely important event in modern history, emphasizing the systemic and state-sponsored violence which distinguish it from other genocides. Florida teachers are enjoined to teach about the gradual unfolding and escalation of the Holocaust, ramifications of prejudice, racism, and stereotyping, with special attention paid to both the apathy and the altruism of the world community." And notwithstanding those sentiments, I've handed you an article about a recent survey taken by the Holocaust Claims Conference with some very shocking results. The first of which is, although there were over 40,000 concentration camps and ghettos, almost half, 49% of millennials cannot name a single one. They don't know Auschwitz, Dachau, Bergen-Belsen, Treblinka, Sobibor, where my wife's family was murdered. They don't know a single one. Other statistics, seven out of 10 Americans say that people seem to think less, or fewer people seem to care about the Holocaust than they used to as generations go on. We need to teach our new generations about this very, very critical time in world history. At the same time, while they recognize the shortfalls in knowledge, more than 90%, 93% think that all students should be taught about the Holocaust in school, and eight out of 10 respondents say it's important to keep teaching about the Holocaust so it does not happen again. I urge you, School Board, Superintendent, to take all necessary steps you can to ensure that our Manatee Schools are not only in compliance with the law, but they take their mandate very seriously and teach the Holocaust next, this coming year and in ensuing years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public comment.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Messenger. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Does the Superintendent have a recommendation?
Yes, the Superintendent recommends approval of the minutes from June 11, 2019, workshop and regular meeting.
So moved.
A second.
Okay, the Superintendent's recommendation has been moved by Board Member Kennedy and seconded by Vice Chair Messenger. Is there discussion? The Chair hearing none, the Chair will call the question, and all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. The motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent items, and I'm asking if the Superintendent has a recommendation concerning this item.
Yes, I recommend approval of the consent agenda for June 25, 2019.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the Superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Messenger to approve the Superintendent's recommendation. It's been seconded by Board Member Kennedy. Is there discussion? The Chair recognizes Vice Chair Messenger.
I have public comment.
Okay.
Becky Kenease, you signed up twice. I didn't know, you know, you spoke at the public comment section earlier, but I didn't know if you wanted to also speak since this is when the contract's coming up, if that was the second time you signed up, if you had intentions to speak again. No, okay.
Okay.
And that is all I have.
Any other? Okay. Hearing no further discussion, the Chair will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. The motion carries unanimously, and the Superintendent's recommendation is approved unanimously. The next item on the agenda is new business, non-consent items. Is there the item concerns approval of agreement between Janelle Zorredi-Yost and, and is there a recommendation from the Superintendent?
Yes, I recommend the approval of agreement between Janelle Zorredi-Yost and the School District of Manatee County for July 1, 2019 through December 20, 2019, not to exceed
A second.
Okay, the Superintendent's recommendation to approve new business number one has been moved by Board Member Kennedy and seconded by Vice Chair Messenger. Is there discussion? The Chair recognizes Vice Chair Messenger.
I was only going to ask if Mrs. Saunders wouldn't mind talking a little bit about what this job is, who this person is, just so that the community is aware of this hire, because it's a big, it's a big hire.
It is a big hire, and I appreciate that. Ms. Yost is going to be serving as our Deputy Superintendent of Instruction. She's a retired superintendent from St. Lucie County. She has acted as a Deputy Superintendent of Instruction prior to her superintendent post. She's also been a principal, a teacher, and educator. The reason she is no longer Superintendent, she retired after finishing drop and so forth, and we were fortunate. She does have a place over in our area in Longboat Key, and she was looking forward to coming back and assisting with this task. So she will begin July 1st.
Okay, that's wonderful. We're very fortunate. Is there any other comments, questions, discussion? The Chair hearing none will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. The item is approved unanimously, 5-0. Next item is approval of a new job description and position of foreman lawn maintenance. Is there a recommendation from the Superintendent?
Yes, I recommend approval of the new job description and position of foreman lawn maintenance.
So moved.
A second.
Okay, the Superintendent's recommendation has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion concerning the recommendation of approval of a new job description and position of foreman lawn maintenance? The Chair hearing none, the Chair calls the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. The motion carries unanimously. Next item, number three, under new business, is approval of a new job description and position of technician lawn maintenance. Does the Superintendent have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the new job description and position of technician lawn maintenance.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by the Vice Chair Messenger to approve this, the Superintendent's recommendation. It's been seconded by Board Member Kennedy. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, the Chair recognizes Vice Chair Messenger.
I, I just wanted to highlight one of the things that's in the executive summary that I think is really important to note here is that even though we're hiring and adding this new position, it really will become a budget-neutral item because we'll be able to use district employees rather than perhaps using some of the outside vendors, and I think that that's, will provide better service to our schools, and I think that's a really good plan. So I just wanted to highlight that, I think that's a really important thing that we should take note.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Messenger, for sharing that information for us. Is there any other discussion or comments? The Chair hearing none, the Chair will call the question. Is there, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. The motion passes unanimously and is approved. Okay, I think we're at item number four, new, new business, and it's, does the Superintendent have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the new job description and position of director ESOL migrant in dual language.
So moved.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved by Board Member Kennedy and seconded by Vice Chair Messenger to approve the Superintendent's recommendation of approval of a new job description and position of director ESOL migrant in dual language. Is there any discussion? The Chair recognizes Vice Chair Messenger.
Sorry, I'm going to keep interjecting because I feel like the community needs to be involved, and we need to, you know, share these things, but I feel like I wanted to commend the Superintendent for this job because I think this is really responding to the changes in our community. And I know that, you know, as we talked at the board briefing, you know, some jobs will be shifted and, but I think that this really makes a lot of sense, especially considering how we're going to have that dual language school, which is at the last workshop, and so I just wanted to, I'd say, I think this is a great move.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Messenger. Are there any other further comments? The Chair hearing none, the Chair will call the question. All those in favor of approving new business item number four, approving the Superintendent's recommendation of approval of new business number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. It carries unanimously, 5-0, which brings us to new business, non-consent item number five. Does the Superintendent have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the new job description and position of purchasing card specialist.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Board Member Kennedy to approve item number five, approval of a new job description and position of purchasing card specialist. It's been seconded by Vice Chair Messenger. Is there a discussion? Chair hearing none, the Chair will call- Chair hearing none, the chair will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. It passes unanimously, five zero. New business non-consent item number six is approval of reappointment of audit committee members. Is there a recommendation of the superintendent?
It's our committee.
Yeah, the next three.
Well, excuse.
I moved that we.
Okay, thank you. I see over there a chair.
Audit committee.
I was on a roll, though, but, okay. It's been moved by.
You had a good rhythm.
Yeah, we got a rhythm. Moved by Board Member Chair to approve new business non-consent item number six. Is there a second to, okay, it's been seconded by Board Member Goldman. Is there discussion? The chair hearing none, what, are you signaling yes, or you wanted to discuss?
I'll need to thank our two.
Returning members.
Returning members, and to say thank you, Mr. Walters, and I hope he enjoys his retirement. And.
From the committee.
Wow. Thank you. I don't know what he's moving on to do, but I thank the continuing members for sticking with us.
Very good. Any other comments? The chair will then call the question. All those in favor of approving the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, indicate nay, that the motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
I moved the changes to the membership of the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee due to the first inaugural member's one-year term expiring, and the resignation of Mr. Norm Nelson, and I wasn't sure about Dr. Conard, but he's not here, so. I guess he missed three meetings? Okay. It is what it is.
Okay. Okay, there's been a motion to approve item number.
Pardon me?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, let me, let me move it. Okay.
Okay.
Catching up with the computer. You're doing great, don't.
Okay, all right. There's been a motion to approve under the new business non-consent item, item number seven, and I thought I heard Board Member Goldman second it.
Yes.
Is there a discussion? Okay, the chair recognizes Vice Chair Messenger.
I don't have discussion, other than to beg Mr. Nelson to come back, but actually, I had somebody sign up for public comment, is Garan Hoover. I don't know, he's not in the room, but I didn't know if he was out in the lobby, so I thought I'd say his name. Garan Hoover, come on down. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I would just like to thank these members because they, they worked hard. I mean, Diana Deal's really going to be missed, as well as Dr. Novak and Linda Shike and, you know, Mr. Simmons, who has worn many hats in the district, from the classroom to the board and on, and even though Mr. Nelson won't be on the committee, I'm sure he will be at the meetings. He's a regular, and I think they all really help to sort of bring, bring that group together and, and serve our interest. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Hope. Okay, is there any further discussion regarding item number seven? Hearing none, the chair will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Chair hearing none, the motion passes unanimously, five zero. The next item, number eight, is approval of establishment of an auditor, you know, selection committee. What, I'm going to, we'll give a little prelude to that. As you know, we have this legislature decides to pass some legislation, and one of the things that they did was saying, we want all school boards in chapter 201915, in Senate Bill 714, they said, school boards are supposed to create an auditor, you know, selection committee, and we've had a wonderful, and we will continue to have a wonderful, hard-working audit committee, but the legislature said, so what? You need to have a thing called auditor, you know, selection committee, and this is, you know, for the laws to take effect, well, July 1, 2019, and to, it doesn't mean that the audit committee cannot continue to make recommendations and do things, but the law says we got to have this, you know, committee. So there has been drafted and put online, the auditor selection committee arrangement, which provides, let me get this out here, I'm sorry. I'm going to read a little bit of what this has been put into the statutes into section 218.391 for the audit selection committee, and, let me see. I apologize. Can the clerk come over here a minute, please, and?
I think.
Okay.
I've got it here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Will you help me find where it's drafted? Okay. Anyway, we have this wonderful statute that we, it becomes effective, or says that we have to have it effective pursuant to the amendments in section 15, subsection 2, 3, and 4 of section 218.391, effective July 1. It says the school board will establish an auditor selection committee comprised of the chair and vice chair of the school board, and the chair and vice chair of the audit committee, and one additional member of the audit committee to be selected by the audit committee. If we have a new, any kind of additional or new auditor, we're supposed to go by what the legislature has set, and that's for, that's what we're supposed to have on the books, and this is what it seeks to do. It creates this auditor selection committee of five people. This can be amended at any time, but the idea is to comply with the law. We don't want to have the statewide education grand jury coming down and asking my colleagues, why aren't you complying with the law? And saying, they got the Crossbars Hotel waiting for us, we're trying to comply with the law. The, well, it provides that there will be five people, as I said before. The chair will be the chair here of the board, the vice chair will be a member, and there will also be, as membership, the chair of the current audit committee and the vice chair, and the audit committee will elect another person. If you believe that means that the present audit committee will dominate the auditor selection committee, you're right on point, but it will be complying, you know, with the law, which we're sworn to do, and that's what's before us, you know, tonight, to have us, you know, being able to tell the grand jury or whatever that we've done it, and so, that's why I think we need to go forward. Yes, sir. Board Member Kennedy.
I agree, we need to go forward tonight. I'm just curious, where on the agenda is the document that you're reading from posted?
Okay, it's in packet page 863.
Like the 4752.
Okay.
I'm looking online in packet page 863 as a copy of the statute.
Okay.
Nothing about.
It's on there, I mean, because I'm looking at the executive summary, but I've got to add.
Okay, okay, 865.
It's number eight, under new business, right before the internal audit.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm looking at, but on, online, the, there's two pages to this agenda item. There's no attached document, and the two pages I'm looking at are the statute. So I don't see anything about.
I see his language, because that's, but here, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yeah, just a second, I'm going to ask the clerk. Can you?
Mr. Kennedy, if you look right above the recommendation, it's pursuant to the amendments, the school board will establish an auditor selection committee comprised of the chair and vice chair.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay, is that responding to your question? Okay. Yes, okay, Board Member.
So, so, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
In full disclosure, I will tell you that I was very much involved in this legislation, and let me help explain what the legislation really does, because the audit committee was in last year's legislation, it's in last year statutes, and the charge for the audit committee was to select an auditor. The change this year that went into effect when this bill was signed by the governor puts a, at least one board member on the selection committee. The audit committee from last year's statute, one of the responsibilities, the primary responsibility, just like this one, is to, to, to select an auditor for the governing body, and it can have other duties. Our own audit committee is the committee that has been recommending the selection of the auditor, and this is only limited to the financial auditor, which this year, the state auditor general's doing our audit. So all this legislation does, and it didn't have a date to do this, now, we could probably just change the name of our audit committee to the audit selection committee, appoint a member to it. It doesn't call for a new board. We've, we've been ahead of the game. We, we have an internal auditor, we've had an internal auditor because our revenues are over $500,000, so even that goes into effect July 1st, it doesn't affect us because we already have an internal auditor. So I, and plus, had we workshopped this, I would have explained what this legislation does, because I was very, very, very much involved in this legislation, and what it does is it just renames the audit committee for these, for these bodies to a selection committee, but also provides for it to have other duties like our audit committee does. The main thing this legislation does is it requires us to have at least one board member on the selection committee. I don't believe we need to create a new committee. We have an audit committee that does a fine job of vetting responses to RFPs and RFQs for the financial auditor. We don't need to select a financial auditor till probably like, maybe October, November, because we have the state auditor general, this year is doing our financial audit. So I'm, I'm going to recommend that we, we not take this up, because, first of all, it was thrown in here, we're already in compliance, because we have a committee that does this. What we do need is we need a board member to be assigned to be the chair. Mr. Kennedy and I frequently go to the meetings, but I, I think there's a little bit of confusion of what this legislation requires us to do and what the intent. The intent is to put a board, at least a board member on the selection committee. We already have a committee that has worked on this and has selected and recommended the financial auditor to this board for the past five, seven years. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Messenger.
I have a question. It says in the, and it was what you were reading, that the auditor selection committee comprised of chair and vice chair of the school board, and the chair and the vice chair of the audit committee, and it says that that is pursuant to a certain law, certain statutes. But in the above portions, it says basically what Dr. Hope's just said, which is, it's really just an addition of one school board member to be the chair of the, of the, of whatever committee, if we want to create a separate committee, that's a whole different issue, but, so, so my question is, is the law asking that we have two members, the chair and the vice chair, or is the law asking that we have one member, and it does not necessarily need to be the chair or the vice chair? That was my understanding when I read it, but then we got an email today from Mr. Blitsko, kind of saying that this other portion was added, and now I see that that portion is in there, so now I'm trying to understand, if that is pursuant to certain sections, I guess I need more understanding of where that section came from, so that I have a better understanding of the two differences.
Mr. Chair, I have the statutes.
I'm sorry, you're out of order.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to respond to Vice Chair Messenger. In the 280, 218.31 order selection committee of the statutes, and this is pursuant to chapter 201915, provides that in 2B, that the auditor selection committee for, and says, municipalities, special districts, district school boards, charter schools, or charter technical career centers must consist of at least three members. One member of the audit selection committee must be a member of the governing board, which is interpreted to be the school board here, of an entity specified in this paragraph, who shall serve as chair of the committee. All right? Now, whoever, and we could appoint anybody who is a member of this board to be on this auditor selection committee, who would be chair? Okay? Now, the purpose of having a separate entity or agency is to not mess, you know, with the audit committee. If we say, well, audit committee, you're going to do this, then are we going to then try to impose upon the audit committee a member of the school board as chair? I don't think so. I don't think that's a good idea. I think the simplest way is having a separate committee for a singular purpose of when we need to appoint a new auditor, we have that committee, and this doesn't preclude the existing audit committee from, from doing everything that it's doing now, but it does comply with the law, and it has other ramifications. When we create this auditor committee, which is proposed of having five people, it could be only three, but I think that, you know, five is a nice number, the, composed of, you know, the, the board chair, the board vice chair, the audit committee chair, the audit committee vice chair, and someone else elected by the, the audit committee to be on this five-member committee to comply, you know, with the law in this auditor, you know, selection committee and have it, this is to be effective on July 1, 2019, you know, what is it, basically a week from now? Okay? And there is not, it's, it's the simplest, cleanest legislation that this board can do, you know, to comply with the law. The suggestion that we've heard from Board Member Hope is, well, gee whiz, just call it the audit committee, are we going to change the name? Who's going to be chair of it? And I, I don't, are we going to kind of redo the, you know, charter of that to take this into account? The cleanest way, the quickest way, the conformity with the law way, is to, you know, adopt and have this separate committee. As far as the input, and you might say influence, of the audit committee by having three members on that committee, who are audit committee members to begin with, I don't think it's diluted. There's still that input. I think there was a concern, you know, maybe of some, well, are we taken out of the game? Absolutely not. Not only they, you know, dominate the auditor selection committee, but also they have the audit committee, and there's compliance with the law, and anybody who comes investigative from the statewide grand jury on education, they say, we did it, we complied with the law, we got your, your committee. There were some of us who maybe felt that it was over legislatting, you know, local affairs, but we did it, and we're going to have that, and it's in place. It's all done. Thank you, Board Member Goldman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the language of the statute and the language of the summary are different. The statute requires no less than three members. That is all that it says, except that one of the three must be the chair of the entity, which in this case would be Mr. Martin.
No.
Not necessarily.
It doesn't say that.
You know what? Excuse me, Mr. Hope, you're out of line. Okay. The governing body of the district school board shall establish an auditor.
The governing body of the district school board shall establish an Audit Selection Committee. 2B, the Audit Selection Committee for the school board must consist of at least three members. I know that's all I've said. One member of the Audit Selection Committee must be a member of the governing body of an entity specified in this paragraph, who shall serve as the Chair of the committee.
Of the selection committee.
That's all we're talking about. This, this is an executive summary that asks us to establish an Audit Selection Committee. The proposal that we have before us is that that Audit Selection Committee be composed of the Chair of the school board, the Vice Chair of the school board, the Chair of the Audit Committee, because that's what it says further down in there if you read the whole thing, and the Vice Chair of the Audit Committee. And we are saying, and one additional member of the Audit Committee. That's what we are saying. That's, that's the part that we read. The statute doesn't require that. What we have is an Audit Committee that still is empowered to make recommendations. They just won't make them directly to the board. They will make them to the Audit Selection Committee. That's all. It's not that complicated. It's not rocket science. And it's not discretionary. And it's not something that's ethereal and in the, it, it, it's just straightforward reading of the language. Now, if I were to give my opinion as to why they are doing it this way now, is that it's an additional check and balance.
Mr. Hope, you're out of line.
I'm speaking.
Okay, can you please conduct yourself according to rules?
Thank you. It is an additional check and balance before the board has to vote. That's all. We get input from an Audit Committee to an Audit Selection Committee of which the Chair must be a member of the board. And the, the statute goes on to say, and we must hear their selections. That, that's what's brought to the board. So, we've only omitted this step. But then again, if you read the statute, this only becomes effective July 1, 2019. So everything that we've done up until now has been done decently and order. We don't need to complicate this with a workshop. And all we need to do is to have two more people that will serve on the Audit Selection Committee along with the Chair of the board, who must be the Chair, who, who, along with the Chair of the governing entity, which would be the school board. It's, it's, it's really, you know, we, we make a lot of smoke and mirrors out of stuff that's just pretty straightforward.
Okay, I will respond. I, I agree with, you know, 99% of what you said. The proposal before us, I think should be viewed as implementing the requirements of the, the statute. Now, the statute says at least three. It can be more. And it's, why have five instead of three when only three is required by the statute? It's to have a broader input to the Auditor Selection Committee. It allows for the Chair of the Audit Committee, the Vice Chair of the Audit Committee, and another person of the Audit Committee to be on there by having the Chair of the School Board and the Vice Chair of the School Board on there. It adds information, you know, for going to the board as well. It, is it required to be five? You're absolutely right. It doesn't. The law doesn't require that. Is it a good idea? I think it's a good idea, you know, to have the five on there. And the, the idea, and you brought it out, the idea, okay, we have an, an Audit Committee whose recommendations, you know, can be done, and I, I hope will be done, but right now we don't have the structure and the requirements in our Audit Committee that comply with the law. And by having this Auditor Selection Committee that does comply with the law and implements the law and has it done, you know, by July 1, if anything comes up where we need to, you know, select an auditor for external, internal, or whatever, we're, we're, we're in compliance. And this is an attempt to comply with what the legislature said we should do. And I don't, I agree with you. It's not all that complicated. And I think we ought to go forward with it and get it done. Now, Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the establishment of an Audit Selection Committee, which consists of the entire Audit Committee plus one board member who serves as its Chair.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a, a motion by Board Member Kennedy that the membership of the Auditor Selection Committee that is required by, you know, Section 218.391, include as its members, all members of the, what we call the Audit Committee, okay? And, and an additional member of, of the school board.
Who serves as its Chair.
Who will serve as the Chair of that committee and carry out the duties of, required by statute to be, the statute's 218.391, the Audit Selection Committee procedures. Is, is that, is that your motion?
My motion was shorter, but I think, I think it goes without saying that they will follow the statute.
Okay, so, all, all the members of the Audit Committee, like it or not, they're going to be on this committee. Okay. Okay, now, that being said, I think that it was seconded by Mr. Hope, or Board Member Hope. Okay, is there discussion?
Yes.
Okay. The Chair recognizes Board Member Golden.
Thank you. If this motion passes, you're under risk, more than any other thing, of having a 4-4 vote coming out of your Audit Selection Committee, which is why the Audit Selection Committee is made up of an odd number to begin with. Secondly, if you involve all of the members of your Audit Committee in the Audit Selection process, you then have an Audit Committee that's making recommendations, as they are supposed to, as to who should serve as the auditor, and those same members plus one making the selection. That's what this motion does. I'm not saying that that's what the statute does, but if you make, I mean, it's just logic. If you make all of the members of the Audit Committee members of the Audit Selection Committee, then the same members who voted for the audit, or who proposed the selections to come to the Audit Selection Committee are just going to be doing it one more time with one additional vote, which would be the Chair. However, if there's any consideration for not complicating this any more than it is, if the maker of the motion would consider an Audit Selection Committee of three people, that's an odd number. It is the Chair of the School Board who must be the Chair. It can be the Chair of the Audit Committee and one other member of the Audit Committee. That's still a minority because there's seven of them. And if it's the Chair and the Vice Chair, it doesn't really matter. The bottom line is that they still, they still make the recommendations as they should, but instead of coming directly to us after July 1, they are required to go to a Audit Selection Committee, which is chaired by the Board Chair, and made up of two other people on that Audit, out of the Audit Committee. It doesn't say that. It says that there just must be two other people. So it can be the Chair and Vice Chair of the School Board and one person from, and the Chair of the Audit Committee. That doesn't matter. It's just three that will then bring a recommendation to the board. We are not absolved from making the final decision. And that's, and that, and that's, that's my unwritten.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Board Member Golden. I interpreted your, your remarks to ask the mover, who was Mr. Kennedy, if he would consider amending his motion in accordance with what Board Member Golden was saying.
I, I'd like to hear the rest of the comments and then I'll, I'll.
Okay. I think Board Member Hope's has some comments to share.
It's not even late tonight, but I want to remind my partners that we had a workshop today on the Audit Committee. And let me read you the very first sentence and the very first paragraph. "The primary mission of the Audit Committee is to assist the Manatee County School Board in providing oversight of the internal and external audit function. The Audit Committee will advise the board in the following areas: review the requests for proposals, RFP, RFQ process, use to solicit quotations for internal and external audit services, recommend the appointment of the internal and external auditors, review the scope plan, blah, blah, blah." I might add that I think that we received an email that had the 2017 statutes in it, which calls for an Audit Committee to do this. As I mentioned before, we have a committee. We have been in compliance with statutes. What changed in the 2019 statutes, where you see when it goes into print, is the addition of at least a member of the governing body. And that member shall serve as the Chair. They changed the name in the statutes from Audit Committee to Audit Selection Committee. This stuff has been here. We've been in compliance. We've been doing it. The reason why you have an Audit Selection Committee that may also be involved with the, with, with the audit is because they understand the organization. We workshopped the Audit Committee Charter. It's the same charters back in 2012 or whatever. Their primary responsibility is to advise us on the hiring of the auditor. That's what the old statute said. The new statute merely puts at least one member of the governing body on there. I asked my members, look, I'm, Charlie.
Charlie's fine.
Mr. Kennedy's motion is great because it basically takes what we have, what they've been doing for all these years, and it adds a member of the board to chair that selection committee. That's what this statute is about. That's why, Mr. Chairman, we should be workshopping these issues. We should not have spending this time to argue about something when we haven't discussed it. And it probably would have helped to clarify what this legislation, the section of 7014 actually does. And, and so, members, I, we don't need to debate this any further. Let's, 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 let's do, I, I, I move the question, oh, no, you got a comment. Never mind. I, I ask you to support Mr. Kennedy's motion. Thank you.
Okay, the, I, much of what you said, I, I don't agree with. I think it's a misstatement, a misinterpretation of what was said before. But is there anything for, Vice Chair Messenger?
Just to clarify my understanding, the law states that one member of this, of the school board must be added to this committee, but it does not state that that member must be the Chair.
That's correct.
It only states that whomever is chosen by this board will then become the Chair of that committee.
That's correct.
It does not necessarily state that it must be the Chair of our board.
That's correct.
Just, I want to make sure I understand that correctly.
That's, that's, that's my interpretation as well.
Okay. Second, I believe that there is a need to create a separate committee from the Audit Committee that will only serve when we are selecting an, an auditor, which is what I think the motion was. I think that I would expect the Audit Committee to still exist and to do what they're doing. However, I think Dr. Hope springs up a point that perhaps we need to review their charter more because I believe that this law removes the job of putting out the public notice, interviewing the firms, evaluating the proposals, all the things that were charged the Audit Committee would now be charged to this committee. So, that committee would not be then, the Audit Committee would not give their recommendation to the Audit Selection Committee, which would then give it to the school board. This would remove, if I'm trying to make sure I understand this correctly, this would remove those jobs from the Audit Committee to this Auditor Selection Committee, which sole job would be to select an auditor. Is that my understanding? You saying no? I, I want to make sure I understand. That's a genuine question.
I am, I am, I am saying no.
Okay.
With both committees, they make recommendations.
Sure.
To the board. Okay, you said select. The.
I'm sorry, I used the wrong word.
Okay. And I think the legisla, the legislature used the wrong word. They call it, you know, Auditor Selection Committee.
I see.
And, and so, if the legislature can do it, you know, I'm sure they would excuse you and for us, but it, in, in both instances, it's a recommendation.
Of course.
And does, does adoption of this proposal mean that the current Audit Committee is denuded, in a, in a sense, of authority for making a separate recommendation to the board about the selection of an auditor? No, it doesn't. There, there isn't any delegislating authority of, of the Audit Committee. Okay?
Okay.
I think the best way, it's supplemental to comply with what the legislature required us to do. They said we're supposed to create, and it's a bad name because it's misleading, okay?
Sure.
A Auditor Selection Committee. They say you're going to create an Auditor Selection Committee, and it's going to compose of at least three people, one of which is going to be of the governing board, which is the school board. And it's going to, it, it does have, you know, further language to, that is similar to what we have asked, you know, our Audit Committee to do. And I don't think it's, you know, real burdensome. The, the purpose of this, you know, proposed legislation is to simply comply with poorly stated, poorly written, ill-thought-out legislation that came down where I think, from the legislature, to address maybe some districts that don't do the great job we do. And the simplest way I can think of is, we, instead of going through reforming, abridging and all that, the, on the Audit Committee Charter, is that, okay, we have a separate committee that does one thing. It makes a recommendation. It makes a recommendation of who the auditor could be. It, we can just have it three people. We can have it five. We could have it seven. We could have it or white. My suggestion was five. So that there is really kind of unanimity, maybe between the Audit Committee and the, this quote, Audit Selection Committee by loading it with Audit Committee members. The, the Chair of the Audit Committee, the Vice Chair, and someone selected by the rest of the Audit Committee, so they have three people on there. The reason, you know, I suggested, you know, for the, the Chair of the Board, whoever it might be, you know, to be Chair of it, well, first of all, whoever comes from this board is to be the Chair of the Audit, you know, Selection Committee. And I think that there's advantage from having, you know, the Chair of this board, me, whoever, Peter Pan, whatever, for that connection, you know, to be Chair. And I think there's advantage to have as another member of, of the Audit Selection Committee, the Vice Chair. Now, doesn't have to be, don't even have to have two people from the governing board on there. It's not required by statute. But I think it's a good idea. I think it's good legislation, you know, to, to have a second person. And I think the Vice Chair is a good person to have because the Vice Chair is kind of the, the closest to the Chair in communicating with the rest of the board at meetings. And if the Chair of the Board couldn't be at a meeting of the Super Auditor Selection Committee, well, the, the Vice Chair is expected to, you know, sit in, you know, for, you know, the Chair. And we'd be doing so in that capacity, be it me, you, or next year, or whatever. And that, that's, that's the suggested, you know, structure to comply with the law that they expect us to have in effect July 1. Okay, Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you. Mr. Minor, I would ask, number one, that we be mindful of our own self-imposed five-minute rule because we're bumping up against it again. But after hearing from everybody, I'm comfortable with my motion as I've made it and it's been seconded, and I will take one minute to say why, is I think. seconded, and I will take one minute to say why, is I think that one of the items that we talked about during the workshop was about what establishes a quorum of the Audit Committee. So to Reverend Golden's point, my motion makes every member of the Audit Committee a member of this committee, but if they are absent that day, then your quorum becomes the majority of whomever is present. And I, and I don't think that, well, we have to make that decision, let me finish. We have to make that decision when we do this charter. I think we can do this easily, because when we complete the Audit Committee's charter, we roll this subcommittee, I'll call it for lack of a better term, we roll this subcommittee into the Audit Committee's charter, and it, to me, I think this is the cleanest way to do it, and that's all I need to say on it, and I support the motion as I made it.
And that's going to be accomplished before July 1?
We are, we are making, we are approving this committee tonight and the membership of the, that's all we have to do by statute. We can write its charter or finalize its charter later.
Any other, any other further comments? Okay, the motion's been made by Board Member Kennedy, and it's seconded by Mr. Hope, that, okay, okay, we have somebody, she looks familiar.
I don't think, sorry.
That this Board, you know, established, at this time, a Auditor Selection Committee, you know, to comply with Chapter 201915, and that their, the makeup of this committee that we are establishing, you know, tonight, shall consist of all members of the Audit Committee, whether they like it or not, to be members of this Auditor Selection Committee, and one person, you know, chosen by this Board. And I guess we need to choose that tonight, too.
I think that we do.
I need to call the question. Okay.
I did call the question.
Well, we're trying to legislate, okay? And you've named most of the members of this committee. Who is going to be to comply with the law? Who are we going to name, you know, to be Chair of this committee? Okay, Board Member, Board Member, or Vice Chair Messenger?
We have not named one single Audit Committee Member. We just said it would be the members of the Audit Committee. In fact, we don't know one of the members of the Audit Committee in the future, and we just said it was going to be those members.
Right.
We don't think we need to name specifically what Board Member, just because we haven't named specifically, we haven't said it's going to be Dr. Grusso, we just said it's going to be the Audit Committee.
Okay, and one member of this Board.
And one member of this Board, yeah. So I don't.
So we're going to leave it at that, we're not going to name the people? That's if it passes. Pardon, if it passes, okay. I think the motion's been moved and seconded, and I think the question's been called. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, the Chair called the question. All those in favor of Board Member Kennedy's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, I understand that Board Member Kennedy, Vice Chair Messenger, and Board Member Hope voted aye. All those opposed indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
And Board Member Golden and the Chair, Minor, voted nay. The motion carries three to two. Okay. Yeah. I'm kind of shaking my head. I'm taking that we have established an Auditor Selection Committee with that composition. Okay. Legal update.
Oh, we got one more.
Okay, workshop item request.
No, new business item. It's the approval of the.
Let's put this off till next year. Okay, okay. We, to y'all out there, earlier today, we had a workshop, you know, concerning a professional service contract with CRI. We responded to questions. Is, is there a motion that we approve, the proposed contract with CRI?
I so move, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the letter of agreement with Carr Riggs and Ingram LLC to provide the requested internal audit services to the School District of Manatee County.
Okay, that is set forth in the contract, the letter of engagement that was provided to us, okay. And there's a second by Board Member Golden. Is there Board, Vice Chair Messenger?
I just wanted to thank everyone that went into negotiating this, and I'm sure that the Chair had his hand in it, knowing him. And I feel like many of the concerns that I brought up, I feel like were addressed. So I, I appreciate everyone that went in and gave in those efforts. You know, I talked to Dr. Grusso, and I believe that, you know, she's working to make sure those concerns are addressed, and that, I also know that the Audit Committee will ensure and will continue to, you know, make sure that we stay the course, and so I have faith. And so I just want to say thank you.
Okay, thank you.
It's called Charlie.
Vice Chair used to read fingerprints in an earlier profession, I believe. Go on. The, okay, Board Member Kennedy, okay.
I just want to be clear on the motion. When Dr. Hope said it, I think he said approval of the engagement letter.
Approval of professional services contract.
Okay, there, I just want to be really clear, we're approving the contracts.
Okay, yes.
We tabled it, we passed it, we set a letter of agreement, it's a professional services contract.
Okay.
Motion for approval for professional services contract with Carr Riggs and Ingram LLC to provide internal audit services for fiscal year 2019-2020. School District Manatee County Number 19-0079-RG not to exceed $349,400. That is the motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? It's been moved and seconded, fingerprinted, and we, the Chair called the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes unanimously, five zero. Okay, now we get on to legal update, and.
Workshop request.
Workshop request. Who wants the workshop?
Mr. Minor.
Okay, Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you, I've just got a quick one, and this is basically about the, we have heard from both committees, Audit Committee and Citizens Financial Oversight Committee, that we have a backlog of recommendations from those committees, that they've been waiting a long time for this, for this Board to take action on the recommendations. So what I'm, I guess what I'm seeking is a workshop where we could go through all the outstanding recommendations, and then at the Board Meeting of that evening, take action if necessary on those recommendations.
Okay. Thank you, any others?
I like that idea.
Board Member.
I just said I like that idea.
Okay, the, any others?
Earlier, I had asked about a workshop leading up to Suicide Prevention Month in September, and I think we had said that the workshop would precede the July 23 meeting. And I'd like to have a presentation made from some of the people that I work with at Centerstone Behavioral Health Hospital, because they are also planning a big observation during that month. And I'd like to at least sit down and talk with the Superintendent, and have us get together on how we can weigh in, not incidentally or coincidentally, but intentionally, on the problem of teen suicide. So I'd like to have that workshop in July, so that we can properly prepare for however we're going to be involved in Suicide Prevention Month.
Okay, thank you. I was moved by the presentation about Holocaust education. Now, I understand the representation is, the law says that we're supposed to do that. Now, I haven't read the statute, probably should. I'd like a workshop where that's addressed, if it is. When are we going to do it? How are we going to do it? When is it going to start? I think the purpose of it is to help inculcate knowledge of the evils that can arise by not understanding what has occurred in the past. And the argument that was made is, we're not doing a really good job of it, we're not even complying with statute. Now, I have no reason to believe that the gentleman who spoke before us is, you know, fibbing, and, but I've been fibbed to before, but if he's right, we need to do it right. And I'd like to workshop an explanation from administration why we're not doing it if it's required, and if it is required, when are we going to start doing it and to make it part of our, regular part of our curriculum? So, okay, any other things? If there are, trying to wind it down here. I think we're ready for legal update with Mr. Dye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one thing I want to emphasize, we workshop the Board Ethics and the state mandate that that be added to your bylaws. Just want to make sure you guys read through the proposed language that was given to you and make sure you're comfortable with it. It appears that it was taken, cut and pasted from a code for staff and more of the paid staff, and not really customized for Board Members. I just want to make sure you're comfortable with, with that language.
Okay, thank you. The legal update, instructional update, Madam Superintendent.
Yes, sir, and Mr. Minor, I'll make sure that instruction will be sending all the Board Members what we are doing currently with our Holocaust instruction, our statutory compliance. We certainly can have a workshop and continue to improve. I know that Mr. Kennedy, myself, have had meetings regarding the parties that were here today and so forth, but we'll be more than happy to make sure that you're aware of what we are doing in the classroom and to make sure that we are in compliance. But we'll make sure that you get all that information. I also want to remind parents that VPK and kindergarten registration is occurring, so if you have any four-year-olds or five-year-olds and you haven't done so, please register. A lot of times, we wait till we see the yellow buses driving by, but it is helpful to go ahead and register now, so that you're prepared when school starts. And when we're talking about school starting, we have three brand-new schools opening in August. I would like to go through our dates of our dedication, so that if you don't have them calendarized and you're interested, you can come and view them yourselves. Barbara Harvey Elementary School will be Saturday, July 27th, from 4 until 5, and there's going to be a lot of fun and games and activities, so you're welcome to come and join the fun. Dr. Mona Jane Middle School Dedication will be Thursday, August 8th, from 4 till 6, and tours will also be provided. Parish Community High School Open House and Ribbon Cutting will be Tuesday, August 6th, from 5 until 8. They will also be having a student orientation for new students that are coming there as well. So they're going to be beautiful buildings, they are on time, furniture's being delivered and set up now, so if you're interested, please make sure you're out there. I'm going to go ahead and give my Superintendent comments now, so you don't have to come back to me. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Wagner again for being recognized with the Champions of Healthcare Award for his work and involvement at Manatee Technical College in producing successful healthcare professionals. This is a critical piece in building our community, so I just want to do a shout-out to Doug. We're very proud of you there. And also, I'm very grateful that the Board approved our next Deputy Superintendent of Instruction. She doesn't know it, but when she arrives Monday, we are taking tours of the new schools. So she will hit the ground running at 8:30, and all of those that are interested in how our schools are performing, statutory requirements says by this Friday, scores will be released. So parents that are looking forward to their finalization of middle and high school report cards, that have EOCs that are part of their exam, that will be forthcoming the following week. So we don't know what date or what time, but scores have to be released by the 30th, which is on a Sunday, so we all presume it will be released by Friday. Grades will come probably by the first or second week of July. With that, thank you very much, and we have a long span between now and our next meeting a month. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Next, our award-winning Deputy Superintendent, Doug Wagner, okay.
It's a team effort, but thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple things tonight. First of all, I want to say thank you to our Personnel Department and our support team. We had a successful job fair last week at the Wake Forest Center. We had 180 attendees attend the job fair. We made 60 offers for custodial, 24 food service, 19 bus attendants, and six bus drivers. So thank you for all who participated. We also want to show tonight our final recruitment video. If you remember, we've showed the instructional, and we've also shown the food service. Tonight, this is in partnership with MSTV, of course, and with our transportation team. So Nick, if you could roll the video.
These young people, they're going to be our doctors and lawyers, one of the, they have their future ahead of them. We serve a big part of that. Good morning, Miss Earl. How are you today? A lot of people may look at it as a very minute job to have, to be a bus driver. Good morning. How are you today? A lot of people don't realize the responsibility and what we carry. Because of the job and the contributions that I can make to the, to the community as a whole, I've remained here, and I'm quite satisfied being a school bus operator.
When I drop my kids off at Buffalo Creek, and I see that they're on time and they've been delivered safely, it gives me a lot of pleasure to have done this for the community, and that's something to take away from this job.
I look at myself as being much more than just a bus driver. Good morning, gentlemen. I'm not a teacher, but that doesn't mean that I can't help educate these young students.
It's not bad at all to have three or four hours in the middle of the day when I'm not working. That's a nice piece of work. I can take a nap, have lunch, go shopping, play golf. One of the great advantages is, of this job, is it's really nice to have that period of time in the middle of the day to have off. So you get all holidays, and being from the news business, I know what it's like to work every holiday, every night, every weekend. This was a huge benefit to me, to have all the holidays, have two weeks at Christmas break.
Good morning, Mr. Thomas.
Mike.
And how are you, sir? This department, we were promoted from within, and you can see it when you walk into that office. It all starts out in the field, and these people are promoted from within.
Good morning. The School District has great health insurance. Great. I did not realize that when I signed up for this, but discovered that with this insurance and Medicare, I'm 100% covered on everything. I haven't been paid a copay in five, six years. Nothing. So I would encourage anybody who is like me, retired, and was going to take advantage of these things we've been paying for all of our lives, to look into this and consider, because it really has worked for me.
When everybody played their part, and their role is taken care of and so forth, then we can look at students that's going to blossom. We'll look at that student that may have been the troublemaker, and we see him walk across that stage with his degree, and that makes you proud, that you contributed to that, no matter what anyone else say, it may be minute, but you made a contribution to that. And when you can contribute to our youth growing up, to make this community a better place, to make this state a better place, and this country a better place, these are the things that I'm, I'm inspired about, to wake up in the morning and to be here every day.
This job keeps me young.
You can begin building your future by visiting.
You can begin building your future by visiting manateeschools.net.
They did a great job putting that together, and everyone does contribute to Manatee County. So we're proud of all our operations teams, and thank you for a few minutes tonight.
Okay. I was about to go home here.
I think I'm first, sir.
The superintendent, do you want to make any further comments?
Yes, sir, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you. I just have two quick things. First is MTC last week. We had four MTC graduations. I made it to three of them, and I just want to share a special moment I had at the last one, which was the law enforcement graduation. And I thought Mr. Romine did a great job. He's, he's like a natural-born MC. But one of my former students, who graduated from Manatee High School in 11 or 12, when they did his announcement, and it took me a second, and I said his name. His name is Kyle Crum, and he just graduated in law enforcement. And it took me back. I was like, wait a minute, I know that kid. 2012. I had him. And then I thought back to the kid I used to know, and he was this short, scrawny little surfer, white Rastafarian kid. And like, hey dude, hey Mr. K, you know, that kind of kid? And then he's walking, he's coming across the stage at the law enforcement graduation. He's like, you know, crew-cut, you know, firm jaw, you know, chest out, the whole thing. I'm like, is that the same kid? But, you know, just about, the, being around these kids keeps you young. But, I mean, he was, he was a super-nice kid back then, but to see what he has become since I saw him last, I was really, I was very, I was very proud of him. And as, I was a couple rows back, but as he went by, back to his seat, I was trying to get his attention. I was like, Kyle! And, and he kind of looked over at me, and it gave me that look like, I know I know you from somewhere, but I don't know where. So he just kept going, but, and I just want to share that real quick. That was a really nice moment last week. So also, speaking of Barbara Harvey Elementary, I saw Ms. Harvey earlier today, and she told me about this. I asked her if it would be okay if I shared this, and she said, yes, of course. But for her dedication, METV is putting together, like, a lot like we just saw, a montage video. And so I'm going to give you a couple of specific dates. Next Monday and Tuesday, METV will be at the Kelly Brown Center from 9:30 to 2:30. And then next Tuesday, they will be at the Anna Gale Center from 11 to 2. Or if you would like to give a short video testimony regarding Ms. Harvey, she said you can just contact Charles Clapp-Saddle at METV, and he'll, he'll just book a time to get you into the studio. I, of course, am going to go say my piece to the camera in honor of Ms. Harvey, but the, she, just to share her word, she said, "Your short comment is your choice and conclude, can include," excuse me, "information as experiences with me, things other, others may not know about me, my impact on your life, my integrity, my children's center activities, and so on." So with her permission, I just wanted to let everybody know, if you would like to be included on that video, and I will, I don't know where I can post this, but it's Monday and Tuesday. If you're hearing this and you'd like to, shoot me an email, and I'll send you the dates and, and the details. So that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Kennedy. Next up, Board Member Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have we, Madam Superintendent, have we acknowledged the accomplishments of Chief Financial Officer Jenkins in that department? I, I think that they got another.
And we, it needs to be touted.
Okay.
Let's tout.
But, but I don't know how to say it the right way. She is.
We could have her say it.
Okay.
Would you like that?
Yes. Because I don't think a lot of people in here know what her voice sounds like, so.
So I believe what you're referring to, Reverend Golden, is we receive information from ratings agencies every year, and we've gotten our Moody's Annual Investor Report, and we are still showing at Stable. We were upgraded to an A2 last year, which we passed out to the board, and regarding the review, we are still on our upward movement. So to continue moving up levels, we need to increase our fund balance and keep our debt at a, a relative minimum where we have it at right now. And also, I'd like to congratulate the ladies in finance. For the past 13 years, they've received the Asbo's International Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, and that's for their CAFR, and we just received notification that we received that again for last year's CAFR.
That is the one I was trying to remember. Thank you very much. As many of you are aware, when I began my service here, I'd said that I would meet parents the Thursdays before the school board meetings on the succeeding Tuesday. That didn't last too long. I couldn't keep to Thursdays, but I did keep to the week before. And thank God, we've gotten to June, and we not going to do this anymore till September. I'm going to take July and August off and start back, seriously, just start back up at the beginning of the next, you know, school, school term. It was designed to help parents have more access to their school board members, at least to the ones in District 5. And I think I've done a pretty good job this year, but I, I need some time off. So I'm going to take July and August off and start back up in September.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Golden. Okay, Board Member Hope.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too enjoyed, I didn't go to as many of the graduations that Mr. Kennedy went to, but it's, it's always both an honor and a pleasure to see the products of what we put out, and, you know, these, these folks, we're sending them off to great jobs and, and careers. When registration comes out, I encourage all of you to register for the November Florida School Board Association meeting and FAD's meeting, where I will join one other board member, and we will have a session on auditing and internal audit, and what internal audit is and is not. So I encourage you to attend that session. But, well, I did not hear, when is our Southeast, I mean, not Southeast, the summer high school graduation? What's the date for that?
We talked about that today. It's August.
Yep, let me grab it real quick.
Because we have one more graduation, Mr. Golden. You, you two can make it. It's our summer graduation from all of our schools.
August 10th.
August 10th.
August 10th. So is that right when, when school starts?
I just thought it was a little presumptuous of me to just get on the board and know that I'm going to start going to everybody's graduation, that, that I'll make it next year, but this year, I felt a little embarrassed. All you pros up here have been doing this, and you've been doing a good job. I need to say that. I really enjoy working with you all most of the time.
And I want to correct you. We did good work today. I mean, we, we did good work today. This is how a board is supposed to work together and, and, and make the decision. So thank you, Mr. Chair. Good meeting.
Okay. Vice Chair Messenger.
I really would like to echo what the superintendent said about making sure you're registered, especially if you're a kindergartner, especially in Title I schools, they, the kids don't, the kids don't show up until school has started. And that's really tough on the schools. It's really tough on all the teachers. That's how I got my first job. And, and there were teachers there that had 35 kids in a class, 35 kindergartners that had never been in school before, in a class at a Title I school. So I'm asking, please, please register your children as early as possible. They, they want to know that you're coming. And then the only other thing I have to add is just to thank the chair, and, you know, everyone else, the staff, and, and management, and everyone. I think we had a really big and heavy workshop and meeting today, and I think we persevered through all of it, and, and, I mean, don't take offense, but I'll enjoy a month off from all of you. Well, most of you. But I just want to thank everyone for a good meeting and workshop. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Board Member Messenger. The, wish everybody well. You know, the presentation tonight concerning Albie Ailes and Zack Morris, I don't know, but not many times in my life have I been moved more than at the service, you know, for these two young men out at Woodland. And, you know, it's from great families. And, you know, the, the spirit of togetherness and grief and joy just was pervasive, you know, and the, it was so, you, you got a sample of it tonight, how gracious they were with everybody in their, in their grief. I remember one statement that was made, you know, "Please do not, you know, have malice toward anybody in Peru." You know, love them. There was not one thing taken from their wallets that they had, or any of their property that they had after the accident. The Peruvian people, you know, put their arms around the situation and could not have been more helpful. Now, that's kind of an international, let's love everybody kind of sign, coming from families, you know, who loved their dearest, and, you know, lost their dearest. And I thought it was just, you know, a great example of how we all, you know, should be in, you know, being part of one big family like we have with the community, but also kind of internationally, let's, let's have a little bit of love out there. And I, I guess you saw I was kind of overcome tonight, but I was led by an example of a couple of great families, a great example of how, you know, Southeast, you know, high school, you know, was able to put it together, and Doug was there, and I'm sure you were moved, you know, like I from, and proud, proud of our district, proud of Southeast, proud of all of those kids there. And we're what, we in the district, here we are on the board, but everybody in this district, you know, has something to do with making that work, and part of the family of, you know, having this love. They're all important. We love them all. We grieve for their loss, and we applaud their, their progress, being a student from Mr. Kennedy going across the stage, you know, to all of them. And I guess that's the joy I get from, you know, being at graduations, that in some way, maybe it's not a real big way, but in some way, we're all touching everybody else, and we can take joy in their accomplishment and pride in, you know, what we're doing to be part of this family. With that said, I'm going to adjourn the meeting, and thank you all for a long day with much accomplishment. The chair.[1592.63]